Good evening. Meeting of the zoning board of adjustment Borough of Somerville for June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the open public's meeting act has been provided. That on a copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location was posted on the bulletin board outside Borough Hall mailed, faxed, or emailed to the Courier News and given to the clerk administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Chairman Adair, Mr. Allitt.
Here.
Ms. Carpenets.
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Here.
Mr. O'Neil.
Here.
Mr. Videmsky.
Here.
Mr. Flores.
Here.
Mr. Alvarez.
Here.
Mr. Daniels.
Here. So make a motion to excuse Arts' absence.
I'll make it second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir.
You know, just for the record, Arts is at the Juneteenth county celebration. He's been recognized there for his work in the cemetery. That's why he's not here.
I would like to have attended that, but...
I was there, I had to leave.
See. All right, approval of the minutes from the May fifteenth meeting.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we've got some housekeeping. Cliff, you've been busy.
I think we got everything up to time, so.
All right.
I did not have received any feedback from the board, so I'm presuming that the form and content of the resolutions are fine. I did go over them with the applicant's attorneys, you know, and everything, whatever was in there was worked out, but there was very little, so, you know, I think everything is ready, is the form and content, and has been essentially, certainly I commend it to the board for the approval, for their approval. I know that sustain was apparently extremely important, so that's at the top of our pile. And, you know, but there are some other very important ones, needless to say, Grove Street and West Cliff and Bajua. They're all important, so, you know, but they're ready to go, and I think we can adopt them.
Okay. We're going to go one by one, because not everybody's eligible to vote on each one. Y'all set, Jen? All right. Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash zero zero three Z, fifty West Main Street.
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Allitt.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky.
Yes.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mr. Daniels.
Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one eight Z, ninety Grove Street.
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Allitt.
Yes.
Ms. Carpenets.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky.
Yeah.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mr. Daniels.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one five Z, six West Cliff Street.
I'll move it.
Roll call.
Mr. Allitt.
Yes.
Ms. Carpenets.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky.
Yes.
And Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero two Z, North Midall Street.
I'll move it.
Just one comment on that.
Mm-hmm.
I had, I don't know if the board saw it, but the correction was NFPA thirteen system, and adding a condition that the fire marshal, compliance with the fire marshal's correspondence, I think that was my two points.
They've been added.
They've been added, just to, I know you did add it, I'm just making sure, I don't know if the board, it was another review, okay.
I saw it.
First and second, roll call.
Mr. Allitt.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky.
Yes.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Mr. Daniels.
Yes.
Resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash zero zero two Z, one forty-one West End.
I'll move it.
Give me a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Carpenets.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky.
Yes.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
And Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
All right. Resolution two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one two Z, one fifty-nine West Summit Street.
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Carpenets.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
I can't vote on that one.
Look a little close to that one.
You're an actual neighbor, you can't, you're, you're out on that one.
She likes it anyway.
Ha!
Right.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky.
Yes.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
You all caught up there? Got one more?
Mr. Anderson's, I think.
Yeah, resolution two thousand and twenty-four dash zero zero six Z, sixteen East Summit Street.
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Allitt.
Yes.
Ms. Carpenets.
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky.
Yes.
Mr. Flores.
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez.
Yes.
Can we get them all?
Yep.
Cool. All right, application two thousand and twenty-three dash zero one nine Z, it's the two hundred and one East Main Street Snoko LLC. That's been carried to November sixth. They will renotice. For the record, if there's something that opens up beforehand, they're going to try to get to that one, but they'll renotice.
Right.
All right. Wolf Properties LLC, thirty-five dash thirty-seven North Bridge Street, you're up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
Good to see everybody again. My name is Kara Kuzinski, the law firm of McNally, Kuzinski &amp; mine. We're here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Wolf Properties LLC, who's also the owner of the property.
Before we start, can I ask Mr. Gibbons a question? Are you the, is your firm the planning board attorney?
Correct.
Cliff, can, I was always under the impression that if you represented a board in town, that you were unable to represent a client in front of a board, even though it's not the same board. And I wouldn't want this applicant, application to be challenged after we've gone through it.
Well, technically, technically, you're correct, because generally, it's unusual that, though, I mean, I will tell you, I did it, I've done the same thing in Andover Township and some other municipalities, sometimes it becomes a rule of necessity, and in this situation, I mean, I think the board can proceed, I don't think it will be an issue. I mean, as a matter of practice, it isn't something, you know, we're merely one would do, though. I mean, I don't think it's something that we need to be, I think the board can proceed. I mean, as I say, I'm cautionary as to it, I, you know, was aware of it, I didn't, I didn't believe that that should be an issue. I certainly don't think it's something that should happen, you know, often, but, I mean, you know, there are times wherein, in fact, I just had one at the Quonix where that happened, where the partner of the, actually, the partner of the zoning planning board attorney came before me as an applicant's attorney, and the same question came up, and, you know, we discussed it, and we said, you know, I wasn't going to admonish anybody, and I said, okay, you know, they know the rules of the game, and sometimes that happens. There may be reasons here that have nothing to do with anything, anything else, so, I think we can proceed.
So you're confident you're protecting us so that we're not going to be reprimanded or sued in the event that somebody would challenge?
I believe that we, I believe, unless there's an intention that I know of that we'd challenge on this, I don't think it would be a problem. I wouldn't recommend, and I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to become contrarian here, I wouldn't recommend that it be a habit.
I will, if I may, just for the record, I certainly would not want to put either accountants under the word or my kind of this either. There is case law, specific case law, that indicates that whose township or the municipal attorney is specifically included appearing before either board. There is no such statute or case law that would include one board attorney appearing before the other board.
Well, I don't know that I agree with that, honestly. I know there's a, there's a split in jurisdictions on it, so that's what we're kind of working with. I mean, I'm familiar with what you're talking about, but there is, it's not, it's by no means unanimous.
I think there's a particular, I mean, again, this is...
It's a municipal family doctrine issue.
This has never been anything that I've come across before, I've heard before this year, before, well, people here, before my reports, when they represent the other board.
You did once before when I've been in, no, I understood it was an exigent situation, so, I didn't frankly, I didn't think it would, I didn't, it was something that I just basically said, fine, it's a one-off.
Get your question answered.
So, you know, I mean, I wouldn't do it as a habit, in all seriousness, I mean, I...
Becoming habit with us, Kara, is that what it is?
I mean, I'm not going to now. It never has been, I will tell you that. This is the first time on the right path, so certainly...
I think in the past, though, we have had issues many years ago.
Did Mr. Galvin, Mr. Galvin permit this?
I've only been before this for, I want to say, three times, this may be my third.
Yeah, I had the second one, and I...
The second, yeah, the one, there was another one earlier this year, and then I think it was one that was going to happen.
I would, I would take the position at this point that I think going forward, it would not be a good idea. All right, I mean, I assumed, as I said on the one previous situation, that it was exigent, I think in that situation, it probably could have been excused, and it wouldn't have been, would have been kind of a no harm, no foul, but here, I think, you know, I think if you're going to do this, I think going forward, you really shouldn't.
I just, just...
I'm not implying, excuse me, I'm not implying or impugning anything about you or anything like this, I'm just saying, it's not a, I mean, I deal with this periodically, and sometimes you do look at the exceptions, but, you know, we have had, you know, we've been, I think, I think the law, the law does certainly not, does not go in that direction. I mean, I know you've heard, you've heard, there, I understand the decision you're referring to, but there are other decisions that don't go that way, and quite randomly, it raises issues, it's a local government ethics law, and, you know, consider, consider, I stand by my advice.
And your advice is, certainly, I would not want to in any way jeopardize my client with more this board. And I'll certainly take Mr. Gibbons' comments going forward. If I would have known that before tonight, I certainly would not have taken this on, but I do just want to make sure that if we proceed tonight, that, you know, again, my client is not going to, I don't know what decisions you're going to make in any way, shape, or form, but I don't want anything that's been said to in any way, you know, hinder my client. I think you're getting the advice that we can proceed, unless anybody feels otherwise and likes it. But I will certainly take that line on.
I mean, it'll be up to the board, I mean, I'm trying to, I, you know, I tend to be very conservative on ethics, on ethics issues, on conflicts issues. I also understand, as I said in the past, there were, I guess you could say, exigent circumstances, I didn't know anything that would lead me in another direction, and I didn't say anything about it. I didn't know you'd be coming back tonight, so, I didn't envision you'd be coming back tonight, so I don't want to, I don't want to shut you down, but I don't want to, but I need to tell you, you know, I don't think you should do it going forward.
I understand.
I think we can proceed without this.
Yeah, so I think we can proceed.
I just asked the question, that's all.
I appreciate it, and again, you won't be seeing, I'm pretty scared to tell you.
Not trying to unemploy you.
No, I'm not trying to do that either. I'm not trying to do that either, I want you to understand, I respect the position you're in. I just had a similar discussion with Glenn Keans and all that long ago, sometimes you have to go ahead and do it, and...
I just tend to see a bright line in those situations, so, you know, I respect your inputs.
Right.
So I believe you can now proceed.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
So, okay, Wolf Properties LLC, on the applicant here tonight with regard to the property at thirty-five, at forty-seven North Bridge Street, and it's also block one thirteen lot eight. This property is a little undersized, it's about sixty-nine hundred and forty-two square feet, and it's located in your P O R, professional office residential district. The property will be utilized as a professional office for the applicant's real estate development business on the first floor, and then as a two-bedroom apartment on the second floor, that's what we're here for tonight. Both of these uses are permitted in your zone, exactly where they are in the building itself, and approval is required tonight because since it is a change of use, typically, a change of use will go to the planning. In this instance, however, we have a number, all of them really, which are pre-existing non-formities for this property, one of which, as I indicated, is a reduced lot size, which then figures in F A R brackets. And the floor area is not changing at all. All of these conditions that you're going to hear about tonight, all the things that we're asking for, including the variances and the labors are pre-existing conditions, but since we do need that change of use approval, and none of those pre-existing conditions, at least from what we could find based upon the rural records, were approved specifically by board, by resolution, by this or any other board, we're here tonight to kind of clean it all up. So, we are, you'll see that the applicant will be substantially improving the building property, I know that anybody hasn't bought that property any time recently, but they really could use a nice fresh face, the applicant is certainly going to be doing that, he'll do some architecturals, and he'll hear some testimonies to exactly what that's going to be, and he'll also hear some testimony from our planner, since we do have, as you well know, certain criteria that need to be satisfied in order for you to grant those pre-existing non-formity conditions, which include the T R S. Very early today, we, I apologize for lateness, I simply didn't hear Mr. Cole, we did do a response letter, a Mr. Cole's review letter, you'll see that, I think probably most of them, we've agreed to do as a condition that any approved with a board like grant. I do have two witnesses here tonight, we have our architect and also our planner, that will be testifying as to any of those items that require additional testimony, as well as just overview of what this board needs to do, and again, to put the information on the record that we hopefully do grant the relief we're asking for tonight. Our witnesses that we have tonight, Mr. Mark Marion, he's from Architecture Plus, again, you guys have seen him before, he's our architect, and also Dave Taylor of Harvard Consultants, he'll be here as our planner. So unless there are any questions, we'll see you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Marion?
Good to see you again. We accept Mark.
All right. Let me swear a minute. Do you saw, you swear the testimony you're about to give, this matter will be the truth, so help you God. Be state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Mark Marion, and they are my...
Thank you, Mr. Marion, counsel.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Marion, were you engaged by the applicant to prepare their prepared architectural drawings and connections?
Yes.
Okay, so why can't you go through, slide them to the board, cooperate, build them, what we're going to do there?
Sure, it's an existing two-story building, it's pretty old, about a hundred years old, there's a large attic unfinished, sort of a basement, it's more like a crawl space, it's pretty rough, pretty scary down there, and the plan is to, it's existing, I believe it was like a lawyer's office from the previous signs, and it's pretty well, we have offices downstairs, and a separate, like, rental upstairs. The building's about twenty-one hundred square feet, and it's split pretty evenly, a thousand, a thousand down there, upstairs, the renting unit has two bedrooms, two baths, nice living area, and there's a low roof on one side of the building, we're going to turn, proposing to turn into a cat balcony, so, on the left side, and an office, which is on the first floor, some slightly air maintenance inside, we're going to put a cat bathroom in, a break room, a lobby room, general office area, a private office. And access to the office is from the front and the back, there's a back porch, like the rebuild, a little loose on, there's a little metal roof on it right now, and the front porch, it's an interesting thing, it's like there was a front porch at some point in time that was removed, the roof is still there, and a masonry scoop was constructed, and we're proposing to put the porch back underneath that existing roof, so it's not going to change the port end, but it'll go back to having kind of a wraparound porch on the front, and that back underside a little bit. The residential will be access solely from the front, it has only five aisles, up and it's just a set of stairs, there'll be no direct connection between the office and the residence. Most of the alterations are minor on the inside, nothing real structural, we're already moving shimmy's on the outside, we're giving up a whole, you can, siding, we've been doing this, window surrounds, new columns, a railing, some porch, lattice underneath, some stempel molding, and basically, it's a building, and not a civil engineer, but we do plan on restriping.
He's speaking to the microphone.
Yeah, I'm not a civil engineer, but we are planning on rebuilding and restriping the parking area, we're going to keep on showing a cat accessible spot, you know, I'm not proposing a ramp at this time, but we are looking at the first floor level, ten cameras, usable, especially with the... Upstairs are also minor alterations, just some great, some two baths, I think it looks like it was an old house originally.
Mark, I think you indicated no expansion of the building footprint itself.
Correct.
Okay, and have you discussed the kinds of materials that we're using for the upstairs of the building?
The side, well, just generally, the side, siding, there's some cordyce planned on the back, just a break up there, maybe an addition on the back, a little longer in front, and rest aside, it would be appropriate for a...
And any specific materials that the applicant selects, that mean, build it up the plan, along with the other comments that the board has made, and we'll get to this later in a minute. Do you understand that the applicant is looking to utilize this as their professional office for it, and do you have an understanding as to the number of employees?
We have, there's himself, three employees, part-time, the parking, I think we'd see the required parking for your son. And by the way, I'm saving.
And there's seven required, and eight proposed, right?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
You've got people kind of... How about the sprinkler, is that required, or that's not?
Yeah, the building's probably required, the residential.
Any other, or clients for a needed allocation, as well, that will... You mentioned some gay spaces, gay equipment will be taken place. Did you have a chance to review Mr. Cole's review letter and change what?
I do.
And how about my response letter, I gave, so I think some of your testimony covered some of the items that we indicated, or we addressed satisfactorily in the letter. One of the ones that we did discuss, however, was, I'm on item A seven, and that talks about curving. Item A seven, just for the board's application, says curving of the parking lot is not proposed. Since the parking lot's in the north, meaning lot twenty-two, is connected to this lot, the north side of the parking lot should not be curbed, consideration should be given to, so, curving along the west end property line between the parking lot. Do you just repeat on the plan where the western area is, and your thoughts regarding that curving?
I don't, I mean, the parking lot has been there for many, many years, there's also I believe there's a fence there.
Those are his plans, right?
Yes, okay.
Or toward the, I guess that would be the east.
Mr. Marion, I just want to confirm, these are the plans that you filed, these copies of the plans that you filed, correct?
Yes, this is the, this is the copy that has been filed, it's the one twenty-four.
Okay, they don't need to mark that as evidence. All right, that's fine, go ahead.
You don't need to mark that as evidence, correct?
No, no. And there was also some comments about the lighting, and there's some existing, I would refer to it as residential lighting on the building at the back door, and there's also a light at the front door, which we plan on keeping, and they're very minor in nature, there's no, it's like there's an old spot that, doesn't even look like it's functioning, but there is two small lights at the two entrances for the exterior.
And the applicant's not proposing, at least at this time, to change any existing lighting?
No, we were just going to keep those, not those fixtures, but those light locations.
I just want to take a quick look through Mr. Cole's letter, and see if there's anything else that the board may want some comments on that might not have been addressed in my letter. Discuss the parking. And you did testify that the applicant will agree to amend the plans with regard to any changes or comments that the board may require this evening, correct?
Yes.
I think everything else has been addressed in the letter. You know what, let's talk about refuse for a second. Is there any refuse area proposed on the lot?
Well, it's a good spot for it, back by the crawl space access, the basement access, would be right here, to the left of the, I guess it's the south side of this, basically a Velcro door, in the back, an existing Velcro door, to the right of the Velcro door in this drawing, on north, is where the existing compressor is for the building, and there'll be two compressors for this building, one obviously for the two sources.
Okay, so we'll talk about...
And that's the location for them right there, where the existing one is.
Okay, so, how many containers, they would be typical refuse containers, one for garbage, one for recycling?
I'm familiar with the, well, it's probably the same as Somerset County, so, I think there's, at least in my town, there's two recycling and one refuse.
And that would be separate, one separate group for the commercial aspect, and one separate group for the residential aspect?
I don't know how they do it here.
Mike, how does that work? It's, the commercial property, you can still put to the curb, right?
Well, for new businesses, the answer is, they're supposed to do their own pickup. However, in a situation like this, I don't know how that's done.
They own residential?
They're all curbside pickup by the county, and I don't know how you distinguish from the two, but typically, the policy is that any new businesses take care of their own recycling and solid waste pickup. In reality, I don't know how you distinguish the two on the back, I don't think there's sufficient space to break them up, nor does a four-professional office with three people, how much refuse are they going to be generating? So, in this specific application, I think it just, you put the cans up the back in the area and bring them to the street, I don't see other way of doing it.
And we would certainly be amenable to a condition where if for some reason what we were doing was insufficient, and again, I think Mr. Cole's... And we would certainly be amenable to a condition where if for some reason what we were doing was insufficient, and again, I think Mr. Cole's correct, uh, there's, this is just going to be a, a daily, Monday through Friday operation, professional office operations, there's not gonna generate a lot of refuse, but if for some reason there is a problem, we'll certainly take care of any sort of personal pickup that may be necessary.
We certainly don't want a dumpster out there.
Right.
It's gonna give too much space.
Yeah.
Correct.
And most offices today are pretty much paperless, so you don't even, you don't even generate much, you know, scrap paper.
Except for us.
Well, yeah, we're good at it.
That's Jen's fault.
My office generates a lot of paper.
Um, we talked about, uh, did we talk about the attic, will the attic be finished?
No, there's an existing set of stairs that lead up there, they're quite narrow, and, uh, the attic is not really habitable in any sense.
So that would not be utilized for any residential purpose? Correct?
Correct, yes.
Um, how about the crawl space?
The basement is broken up quite a bit, and the, you know, it's a stone foundation with a brick up out of the ground and, uh, various, uh, levels, and, so it's not really at all habitable, and it looked dry when I was there, but, uh.
Never know.
Uh, it could be used for minor storage, there's, obviously there'll be a mechanical unit down there and holler heater and things like that, but.
In line with that, the HVAC equipment, can you just describe that and the compressors a little bit more?
Yeah, the two compressors, uh, are gonna be back behind the building, back by the Belko doors.
On which, which area, of the same area you talked about, okay?
There's one there now, it's very large and old, uh, the new ones will probably, two will fit where that one is.
And they will obviously comply with whatever noise requirements, uh, of the state that there are?
They would have to, yes.
Correct. Um, how about the utilities, will they be separated for the commercial and the residential?
They should be, it looks like there's two, you know, I don't know, there's two meters on the side of this building right now, uh, on the north side, uh, near the street. Uh, I didn't notice so much the gas, but they would have to be separated, and I don't know how the meters are, are done right now.
Can I jump in at this point, how are you gonna heat, heat this building?
Typically on a situation like this, um, I don't know if there's gas to the building, to be honest with you, uh, but you would have a unit in the basement that would feed the first floor and a unit up in the attic that would feed the second floor.
That's where I was going with this.
Would split.
Yeah, it'd be a split system with a.
Yeah, that would be the right way to do it.
With a furnace room in the attic and heat for above.
Right, hot water heaters might, depending on, you know, the choice of, they both could be downstairs, it'd be easy to plumb them up, so.
So you probably didn't have a, a utility room separate up in the attic then?
Yeah, and there's great access to it from, I mean, there's no pull downs, it's, it's, it's a narrow stair, but it's, you know, it's not habitable, but it's good as an old stair.
I can relate to that, I live in one of those. But, but the attic, it's, uh, you have heating plant in the basement, heating plant in the attic, more than likely.
Yes.
And then water heater, you're not sure.
The water heater, I don't know if they would both go in the basement or they would do the same split. Sometimes putting a, a water heater in the attic is not the best.
It's dicey.
Yeah.
I think that covered everything in Mr. Cole's report that I didn't specifically, uh, address that might have required a little more testimony. Um, anything else you'd like to explain to the board?
No, I just, it'll, uh, I mean, we'll hope to bring it back to what it was at one point in time.
Porch is gonna look nice.
What?
That porch is gonna look nice.
Yeah, yeah, well, it looks kinda silly, this porch roof with nothing there at the moment.
Well, they did that because if the porch keep falling apart, they cost the fortune to put back together.
Yeah, it was cheaper to take it down, yeah.
I have no other questions, Mr. Chairman.
Board have any other questions for Mark?
I have a couple, on the ADA, I, I know the letter says, but spot grade, you're gonna have to do that to show two percent. The ADA has to be flat, which is on two percent.
Where, where that is, so?
Just where it is accessible, they, you have to show an accessible route to the building, but the building does not have to be, as you've pointed out, accessible unless the, the renovations meet the threshold of adaptability. So you just have to show some spot grades out there, the two get, to show that that van accessible space implies.
It's pretty flat there, so I'm pretty confident that it'll.
Doesn't have, you can just be relative to each other, I'm not saying you have to bring in control a mile away, tie it down to twenty-nine datum, you can do onsite, just show me that that area is two percent.
Okay.
And, um, the signage has to comply with the state code, which is the, and, and so forth. And then I know Kara mentioned this, there's three or four, and a correspondence, there's three or four lots connected together, and the, the, the policy has always been to try to get cross-access easements, the future joining them. Now, I understand that the applicant has his own parking lot and it works, and the driveway has a shared relationship. Uh, I'm just suggesting that maybe a receptacle, the applicant would grant the adjoining property permission to park there if in the future the adjoining property was in front of the board and did the vice versa. The idea is that they're, to try to try all the lots together to make a really efficient layout. Now, obviously, the other, the other applicant, or not the applicant, the adjoining property's not here, and the applicant's, uh, parking complies with the exception of medical, which I'll get to in a second. So I'm not suggesting that he needs a cross-access easement for this to work, it doesn't. I'm just thinking down the road to try to tie them together. Uh, I'm not saying grant an easement without being receptacle, I'm just saying should, that the adjoining property come in front of the boards, that, and that would be the trigger for them to give a cross-ass, you have, so you could park on the adjoining property, that's all I'm suggesting.
Yeah, should that happen, the applicant would certainly be open to having that discussion. Um, of course, that would depend on, you know, coming to mutual legal terms and maintenance and such. But, uh, should that be necessary, um, you know, the board would entertain that discussion with the adjacent property owner.
That's fine, we've had issues on comparable properties, I think that's the appropriate way to approach it.
Right.
Yeah.
Actually, I have a question. Where would be intended access to second floor apartment, is it exclusively in the back or would it?
It'd be from the front, there's an existing set of stairs in the front and.
You wanna show him everywhere that is?
Sure. See this area of the drawing, down, you come up the front porch, there's actually two existing doors, and, uh, they both open into an open area which we're going to separate, so the door on the right will open up to the stair hall, and the stairs will go straight up. The door on the left will go into the office.
So there won't be a back, there won't be a back staircase?
There's no back staircase for the residential.
Any other questions for the architect board? Anybody in the public have any questions, the testimony just given? You're all set, Mark?
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, and then our next witness, uh, is Mr. Gabe Baylor.
Hi, good evening, would you stand and raise your right hand?
Sure.
You solemnly swear as a testimony you're about to give me this matter will be the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Gabe Baylor, B.A.I.L.E.R.
Thank you very much, counselor?
Thank you.
Mr. Baylor, could you just state your resume and credentials for the record?
Of course.
Some boards you've appeared for before?
Sure, I've been a licensed planner in state of New Jersey since two thousand and seven. I've also a member of American Institute Certified Planner since two thousand and seven. I've testified across boards throughout New Jersey, including, uh, limited to Westfield, South Orange, Plainfield, Jersey City, Newark, and I've been accepted as an expert.
You've made the bar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, okay, so, Mr. Baylor, you are charged with, uh, not only describing the site, the adjacent properties, but also laying out the pre-existing conditions that we need relief from tonight. Um, so, take it away, and I think we're gonna start with some official exhibits.
Yeah, I'm gonna hand out some exhibits.
Were these previously filed or are these just brought to?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, so the first one.
They're just submitted today, okay, they should be marked.
The photos, this particular photo was in your packet, so we're not gonna mark that. If you'd like a copy in front of you though, we can just give you that so you can see it in color.
All right.
This other one was not.
That needs to be marked, yes.
Yes, correct. This other one though, we do need to mark, so you want that as A?
I'll make it A one.
A one? So we get the A one.
Okay, well, everyone has it, all right, great.
I think our.
It's always when we don't come prepared, exactly, we have the problem.
All right.
So, take it away.
All right, good night, Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as mentioned, Gabe Baylor, um, here on behalf of the applicant, as counsel mentioned, there's numerous variances required. Uh, there's a D, uh, D four F A R variance, and there's existing conditions, uh, non-conforming conditions for minimum lot area, front yard setback, right side yard setback, combined side yard setback, lock coverage, and then there's existing non-conforming side conditions for driveway location and parking space. So as mentioned before, this is at thirty-five thirty-seven North Bridge Street. As you can see on the picture that was provided, that, that, uh, provided to the board, the building is in need of repairs. Uh, it has great bones, has some great ornamental architectural details, uh, but it needs a facelift. It's been vacant for approximately four years. Uh, it's, uh, previous to law office, as you can see on the signage, and, um, it, it, it definitely needs some renovation, so what, what the applicant is proposing, as mentioned before, is to renovate the exterior of the ability, make it aesthetically improvements, uh, rehab the exterior, make the, the ground floor, uh, office space for the real estate development company for the applicant, and make the second floor a two-bedroom apartment. Uh, as well, there's gonna be a, a new front porch, and, uh, and make the parking in the back, uh, right now is non-stripe parking spaces, there's no parking space, uh, no striped parking spaces, so we're gonna stripe the parking spaces, repave the asphalt, and provide eight parking spaces in the rear of the property. As you could see on the aerial photography that I provided, this in terms of the location of the property, it's in the P O R zone, uh, the, uh, for office and residential, and this in terms of the context of the lot, it's a, minimum lot size requires ten thousand square feet. What is existing is six thousand nine hundred forty-two square feet, this is an existing condition, and from that exhibit that was marked, uh, A one, uh, what I also showed is the surrounding properties on the same block that are in the P O R zone that don't meet the lot area requirement of ten thousand square feet. So you see that these are existing conditions, it's in tune contextual with the surrounding lot sizes, uh, for the properties in the P O R zone within the block. And also, you could see this in terms of the relationship of the building to the downtown. It's a block away from the central business district, it's right across the street from government buildings. Uh, so, this in terms of planning purposes and repurposing this building for office use and residential is something that, uh, well, I'll, I'll, I'll mention, but, you know, meets planning criteria. So let's go over the, the proofs and the criteria needed for this. So as mentioned, a D four, uh, variance, F A R variance is required, where a maximum of twenty-five percent is permitted or one thousand seven hundred, uh, one thousand seven hundred thirty-five square, square feet on the six thousand nine hundred forty-two square feet lot. And what is existing is thirty-one point oh-two percent and, uh, thirty-one point oh-two percent and two thousand one hundred fifty-four square feet. As mentioned, this is all existing, we're not, and expanding any of the building, this is all existing. So I'm sure as the board is familiar, there's the positive and negative criteria. The positive in terms of, uh, criteria, variances can be granted in, in particular cases for special reasons, and the negative criteria, proposed variance can be substantial without substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. However, this is for a D four variance, so there's case law, the Coventry versus Westwood case, uh, court reasoned that a D three conditional use is in question, essentially a permitted use was not complied with one or more conditions by the ordinance, and therefore should not be held in the same standards in non-permitted use. As well, the courts in the Randolph, Randolph versus Town, uh, Town Center, the Coventry case, was applicable to the D four variance for using the basic same reasoning that it, that the permitted uses of the office use and the, the two-bedroom apartment are permitted, however, the F A R controls the intensity. You know, in terms of also that the case law said that it's not, if, if the site is particularly suitable, it's in terms of if the property can accommodate the increased F A R, the increase, increased F A R floor area with the property. So in my opinion, the positive criteria for the D, D four F A R variance is, is mentioned, this floor area is existing. We're, we're not expanding the building in any way. It's an under, undersized lot, as you can see by the exhibit, the surrounding lots are also undersized for the P O R zone for the ten thousand square feet. There's sufficient parking, uh, seven parking spaces required, there's eight parking spaces provide, inclusive one handicap parking spot, which, which was provided for. As mentioned, the size and scale is comparable to the existing building, is in North Bridge Street. It supports the downtown, which is only a block away, and in, in essence, I, I feel this is kinda within the central business district in sense, in self. Uh, it's a vacant property that's been vacant for probably four years, and I think this is appropriate, increased F A R for this location to being a block within the downtown. As well, it supports the following goals of the two thousand nine nineteen master plan. The goal is provide a range of housing types to meet vari, varied residence population needs, as well as preserve established residential areas, promoting redevelopment by establishing redevelopment areas. We're providing a two-bedroom apartment, which wasn't previously provided, and it's also within walking distance of the downtown. Also, the policy is increase the opportunities for households to obtain satisfactory housing at a variety of prices. This in terms of this is not a single family, it's a two-bedroom apartment. It's in location within the downtown core, close to, close to public transportation. As well, also the two thousand nineteen master plan, the goal is to encourage development improvement of non-residential uses in designated area. A strong business community is vital to the fiscal health of the borough. This is my opinion, I, even though it's not on Main Street itself, I still feel it's within the central business core. You're providing a office use that applicant already said he's gonna occupy by his real estate development company, so it's not gonna be for lease, it's gonna be soon as, if, if this application is approved and improvements are done, that this will be occupied by the real estate development company, and as well, providing a two-bedroom apartment above. Uh, also as well, two thousand nineteen master plan supports, uh, support the central business district so it continues to be a place of destination. I feel that repurposing and, and taking a vacant property and occupying it is, it, you know, makes, makes this, uh, continues the strength of the CBD and makes it a place of destination. And also, the goal of the two thousand nineteen master plan, improve the physical appearance of businesses in the CBD to further create an attractive and diversified business area. As mentioned before by the architect, you could see the building needs improvements. We are gonna make, uh, physical exterior improvements to the building, touch it up, restore the ornate, uh, architectural details, the bones, restore the, the porch, and really make it a aesthetically pleasing building. Uh, in terms of the negative criteria for the D four, uh, F A R variance, as mentioned before, yeah, this, this, this is existing. Uh, there's been no de, detriment to the existing floor areas with the property in the past, provides the required parking. Uh, the office and two-bedroom apartments are permitted in the P O R zone, this is permitted uses, we're not here for a use variance. And as mentioned, I, there's no impacts of the two thousand nineteen master plan. Uh, there's also C variances required, uh, in terms of the variance, C variances, there's a C one, which is a hardship, and a C two, where the purposes of zoning be advanced and the benefits derived by the, uh, benefits derived by the variance will outweigh any detriment. Also, in terms of a C variance, I have to show the negative criteria where it will be out substantial detriment to the public good and will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan. As mentioned before, these are all existing bulk conditions. Uh, the lot area is, requires ten thousand, what, what existing is six thousand nine hundred forty-two square feet. The front yard setback, which requires twenty-five feet, what's existing is fourteen point nine feet. The right side yard setback, what's required is eight feet, what's existing is one point seven feet. The combined side yard setback, which requires twenty feet. The combined side yard setback, which requires twenty feet, and what's existing is thirteen point eight feet. And the lock coverage, uh, max permit is fifty percent, and what's existing is eighty-one point four eight percent. These are all existing conditions. It's, uh, in my opinion, that these meet the C1 hardship, as these are all existing conditions. But also, I feel that they meet the C2 benefits as well, because, you know, you're taking this property that's been vacant for four years and repurposing it, providing new life to it, and, and making exterior improvements. Uh, as well, there's also some existing non-conforming site conditions, as identified by a planner requiring C variances. Uh, the driveway location, which requires ten feet from, from the property line, what's existing is less than ten feet. And the parking location is required more than a feet, more than five feet from the property line, and some of the parking spaces are less than five feet. As mentioned before, these are existing conditions, it's my opinion that this is a C1 hardship. Also, in terms of the purposes of municipal land use law, I feel this applica- application promotes three different criteria. Uh, purpose A, to encourage municipal actions, to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. As you could see and as mentioned before, the proposed improvements occupies a vacant property and make it an active use, make it active, uh, residential use that's within walking distance of the central business district quarter on West, on West Main Street. Also, purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, and industrial uses and open space, both public and private, according to their respective environmental requirements, in order to meet the needs of all of the Jersey citizens. Uh, in my opinion, this is appropriate location, uh, it's within walking distance of the CBD. Uh, it's a prime location, this in terms of residential and office space, and I think it's definitely an appropriate location. And purpose I, to promote the desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. This will be, as proposed, as the architect mentioned, doing exterior improvements to the building. A hundred-year-old building that has great bones, and just really giving it a nice facelift and bringing, restoring it to the historic character. Uh, as well, in terms of the negative criteria for the C variances, these are all existing conditions, you're not creating any new variances. Uh, the lot dimensions are similar to the characters of the, of the adjacent properties. The, the uses are permitted in the POR zone, and there's no impacts to the two thousand and nineteen master plan. There's also a couple of design waivers, uh, which were identified. First one is a shade tree, and it's one tree for every five parking spaces. Uh, we're not proposing any shade trees in the parking lot, uh, this is an existing condition. Uh, it's existing pervious back there, uh, so we're not proposing any shade trees back there. As well, as mentioned before, uh, the curbing, uh, in the driveway in the parking lot. As you could see on the exhibit, the parking lot six is a public parking lot in the rear. There's actually, uh, curbing to, to separate those two properties. But, you know, when you have curbing also, it, it impacts stormwater and it does some ponding for the property, so it actually has some negative impact in terms of stormwater flow. Uh, another, uh, design waiver is a five-feet landscape buffer around the parking lot. We are not proposing that, because if you provide the landscape buffer, this will impact the required number of parking spaces. So it won't be sufficient parking to provide for the office use and the residential use. And the last one is a street tree, um, it's one tree for every fifty feet. The applicant has made a determination that he will work with the engineer to, to see if he can find a suitable tree to be put on the street, if not, there's that waiver where he could do a contribution to the environmental commission. Uh, so, as mentioned, this is a positive application, you know, all these conditions are existing. Uh, the existing FAR, existing site conditions, bulk, bulk, bulk conditions, these are all existing non-conforming. We're just repurposing the inside, and because the change of use on the second floor to make it from office to residential created the process where these variances were required. So I think this is definitely something that the board can look on positively, and the positive outweigh the detriments in terms of this variance.
Thank you.
Yeah? I tell you, just let me roll.
That was wonderful, exactly, I think you hit on everything. Um, I just kind of wanna hit home to the board very quickly. Each one of those, um, variances, waivers that you outline are all pre-existing and will not be exacerbated at all by what the applicant's proposing.
No, no.
And I think you also hit all of the items in our response letter. Uh, you hit the street trees, we talked about the curbing, um... I don't think I have any other questions, Mr. Chairman.
The board have any questions on the testimony just given? Anybody from the public have any questions on testimony just given? Take your information time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Um, I will submit that the relief that we are asking for, again, all pre-existing non-conforming conditions will not be exacerbated by the proposal, and all of that relief is outlined on pages three, four, and five of Mr. Cole's report. Um, we are willing to abide by every item and every representation in our, uh, response to that report dated today's date. Um, and also, with regard to the conditions that were mentioned tonight, um, other than your, I'm assuming your standard conditions, um, the ADA, uh, spot grades to, uh, which must show two percent from the ADA space, uh, to the entrance, which we did indicate otherwise in our letter, but we do understand Mr. Cole's position, and we will be willing to do that, um, as well as, uh, agreeing to work with the adjacent property owners, should they come before this board, to figure out if there's a possibility for some sort of cross-access easement.
So it would be your client's position that they would comply with the terms and conditions of Mr. Cole's report, except as, uh, except as modified by this proceeding?
Um, yes, except as might be noted in my letter, and I think that... So just, let's just very quickly, just so the record's clear, uh, one is fine, um...
I didn't get your letter, so I mean, I'm kind of-
Oh, sorry. Um, so one is fine, two is with regard to parking, I think we've covered that. Uh, three is with regard to what I just indicated concerning the cross-access. That's three, that's fine, um, spot grading we've agreed to do. We did indicate that we were not seeking to install the curbing along the western property line, that is the one item, that is item A7. So that would be one we could not comply with. Um, we agreed to fix the tripping hazards, uh, trying to find the appropriate place to plant the street tree, if not, we have the six fifty contribution. Uh, we're not proposing to amend the existing lighting or install new lighting, um...
Should the lighting be installed, would be residential style?
Correct. That was testimony, um, that's that information, it's testimony as well.
Regarding the parking, I agree with, if parking complies, it may not comply with medical. So should the board approve it? If down the road, I know it's not being proposed now, the medical use would be proposed, just an informal application of board to show that it, it complies. I'm not saying a formal application, just informal to show the seven spaces comply, because with medical, it's one space per doctor. So I, I agree with everything going on, I'm just saying in the future, an informal application to show that should this pop to be used for, let's say, a dentist's office in ten years, that they demonstrate that the parking is sufficient for that application.
And I would submit we don't have to do that anyway, so we have not, at least with that condition, absolutely. And I think the only other one was in item G nine, and that was with regard to the sanitary sewer lateral. Uh, there was some work that was already done, the applicant can provide that information to you, and if there's anything else that's necessary, we'll certainly work with you.
Right, if there's documentation, should the board approve this, that the line was repaired PVC, something. Otherwise, just tell allize it, because the building's a hundred years old, if it's PVC, I'm not worried about infiltration and overflow, but it's terracotta with roots growing through it. And just so the applicant knows, New Jersey American owns the sewer system, and it's my understanding the policy is from the street out. If there's a problem, it's not on, the burden's not on the applicant anymore, New Jersey American will take care of that. So the only burden would be from the curb into the property, if, should there be repairs needed.
Agreed.
That's my soapbox.
Um, so, yes, so, uh, counsel, to answer your question, except for what we just indicated, uh, we would be willing to abide by all the other comments.
Very good.
We do submit to the board that this is a significant aesthetic improvement, as well as an improvement in that we're going to actually be utilizing this property again, revitalizing it, it's very close to your downtown area, and again, governmental buildings, uh, so I think it's very important that this present a good front. Um, we have now, by way of this application, confirmed the approval of all of these pre-existing non-conforming conditions, which have kind of laid dormant for a while, so I think that's important. Um, we will agree to repair the tripping hazard as outlined in our letter, as well as sprinkle the building, which, again, we all know lately how important that is. Um, and for those reasons, and the information was put on the record by our planner, we ask you to approve this application.
All set?
Thank you.
Take a motion to, uh, close the public portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, board? Comments?
Yeah, as always. I think it's a major, major improvement, I've been watching that building fall apart for years. And I expected at some point something really bad to happen in here, so I'm glad that this is happening. I think the use is appropriate, it is in a downtown district, so, and the apartment will rent before it's even built. And so I, I think it altogether makes a lot of sense, and more importantly, that porch would be one heck of a place to watch the bike race.
What a place to watch the downtown.
Right.
Anybody else have any comments?
I do, it's the, uh, gateway to that parking lot, and that's gonna enhance the town, and it's a, it's a great feature. The applicant has been in front of us before, and he has done some very nice work in the town, and I'm sure he's gonna do the same right here. Thank you for doing that.
Anything for us, Mike?
No, I think we covered everything, Mr. Chairman.
Board, you have a motion?
I move. Second.
Roll call? Oh, do you have any, uh...
There is a question, I think from Mr. Videmsky.
Oh, he just twitched.
No, I, I've already discussed the conditions, so I'm not, uh, you know, ready to go.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenets?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Videmsky?
Yes.
Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez?
Yes.
It's Carrie.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Congratulations.
Appreciate your help, your time, um, and have a great evening, stay cool.
Trying. Do any matters, anything else for the board tonight? Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?